Alright, I'm gonna call to order the December twenty eighth. Uh, meeting of the Norton Select Board. Um, in attendance are a. Member Michael Toll, member Stephen Hornsby, and Kevin Snyder, our town manager. Uh, Michael's units. Um, and um. It is seven oh one P M. And we'll start with the part leads. And there's the flag over that.
To apply in the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so um, I think Tim needs to call the uh, planning board to order as well. Is that? How we do this? Yeah, and any members that are here can sit at the table?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. And with that lead in, thank you. I'd also like to call the planning board session to order. Um, I know myself is present. Jim Arts, Alan Boulay, and Laura Parker are joining remotely. And if any member is there in person, uh. As was mentioned, please feel free to join at the table. I do see Wayne back there, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Come on up to the table. Don't be shy. Uh, Mr. Chairman just pointed out um. That the chairman could not join us. That you mentioned, you said it was here, but you didn't say.
Yes, so uh, yeah, so um, uh, the Chair Meg Arts of the uh, of the Select will not be here tonight, so. Um, I love to use this phrase, I am the chair of the town. Of the evening. Um, so um, so I'll be handling those duties tonight and uh, uh, Michael is a volunteer to be the card for the.
And do you do air quotes when you do?
Supposedly. Okay, so um. Alright, so we have the planning board and the select board are um, called to order. And so we have kind of a unique situation, I would say. Uh, we have one available spot on the planning board. Um, and um. Uh, Kevin O'Neil had reached out to us um, expressing interest, um, I believe on a temporary basis. Um, until we could fill the position. Um, and then um, in the interim, we received uh, interest from uh, Danny Horgan. Um, to um, to also uh, show interest in the position. So. Um, I guess we should start with Kevin and just sort of um, you know, ask Kevin uh, uh, to come on up. He was there a minute ago, so. And you have the angle first, Mr. Chair, if you prefer to have. Um, well, I guess I wanted to first, if you, if maybe both guys, if you want to come up and say this, right? And um, I guess the question, the sort of the question for Kevin is um, you know. Now that we have somebody interested, um, are you still interested in in sort of a temporary um, appointment to the planning board?
I am. I haven't met Dan, but um. If Dan is interested in doing this uh, long term beyond the April election. Then I'll certainly uh, yield uh, to him being your appointee. So, I don't know what your intentions are, but.
My intention would be to go beyond just April. Uh, yeah, I um, so my wife and I moved to Norton in March of twenty twenty one. Uh, you know, we uh, we love the town. Uh, ultimately, I'd like to contribute to maintaining the standards the town has uh, you know, shown us so far. Uh, for the near and long term future.
And the thing with the planning board is, as you know, um, special permits require a super majority, five out of seven. And when you only have six members and that only allows one person to be absent. And any, a lot of these special permits can take multiple meetings to get through. So if you're not there at the beginning, you're not there at the end. As Steve knows, uh, you can't vote, which means some of these special permits may not go through if you have. You know, five people that are, that qualify uh, to vote because they've been at every meeting and always more approve it. Um, so it really holds back for probably so the developers and uh, projects in town, so. Unfortunately, I don't have any desire to serve long term. Three years is a long time to uh, commit to anything. Uh, if I were to serve now, basically, I could only, you know, the four months now until the end of April. Would be the only project that I will be able to vote on when it comes to special permits. So I, I really would first somebody, as I, did you sign those on Facebook?
I did, yeah.
I would probably have somebody who plans to run long term. I think it's better for the town that way. So.
Yes, Chair. Um, and this is probably his question for uh, the, the Chair of the Planning Board. Um, so with all the meetings that are now digitally recorded and so forth. A room for alternates on the planning board is not an option at this point, meaning, I mean, obviously, if they go to every meeting, they could, they could, and they heard all the deliberations. But you can't catch up with meetings now by law. You're not allowed to catch up with meetings by law.
I'll, I'll, I'll let Tim answer this too, but, but I know that if, I think you're allowed to miss one meeting. Um, but then you have to, you have to sign a form stating that you watched that meeting. Uh, but that only one. So if you miss two, then you can't vote on that particular item. So, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, through the, the. Mullen Act is the legislation that you can miss one meeting per. Project, for lack of a better term in my head at the moment. Um, and then if you watch the proceedings and sign the form stating as such that you could still participate in that decision. If you miss more than one, then you aren't able to participate in that decision. Um.
Is this just?
I would have to, I would have to, it's anything. Most of the, I mean. Special permits tend to be the decisions that cross the most meetings. Uh, since they have the most moving pieces. Um. Obviously, every decision's different. I would have to be far more of an expert in law to uh. Delve any further into what can you do versus um. What has been our standard operating procedure uh, since I've been on the board?
Okay.
I, I could be wrong, but I believe it's for any, any public hearing.
Okay. No, it's just, it was a question because obviously, Mr. O'Neill has served for many years and then your, your knowledge and on the planning board and. You know, even if you weren't on the, 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 the appointee as an alter, you would be more valuable to the group if you had any interest in that type of role.
Yeah, I think that goes back to our charter. I don't think it, I don't know. But I, I will say that as um. You know, the planning board is probably the most important board, optimist meetings for, right, like I just described. And uh. You know, you guys can get away with three people. You can get away with three people. Most other boards can as well. The planning board is one of those uh, boards where you really, it's important to attend to every meeting because, you know, for the reasons I mentioned. So uh. It puts a, puts a, you know, difficulty on the reporting of members who vote, even if there are only six people, right? That means nobody can take a winter vacation or a summer vacation at these meetings. But if there are any other vacancies in the future, I'll do this again. Um. Temporarily, you know, just to make sure that the seat is full.
I appreciate that, but through you, Mr. Chair.
Um, so what, what? Term are we filling with this appointment? This would be until the April election, before it fills the term, but after March and April.
Mr. Chairman, just for record, and I hate to cut you on the spot like this, because I know Rita Clark is wanting to keep shy. This is which electancy? Who was, whose electancy? Who was the last elected official?
Mr. Mar.
It's Mar, Bill Mar. Okay, perfect.
So if, through the Chair, it wouldn't be for the remainder of his term, it'd just be until the next election?
Okay. And then that election would be the self.
For the remainder of that term, okay?
So now I understand why.
That's.
Yeah, that's just to have someone. So, um, so Tim, uh, you know, if it's, if it's okay with you, I think maybe we just go ahead and move forward with, with Danny for now. Um, and uh, you know, conduct, ask questions or anything we want to do uh. Uh, with, with him and we can, you know, sort of uh, say thank you to Kevin um, for offering and then keep him on the, on the list for maybe any potential openings in the future.
Yeah, no, I, I'd agree. Love to talk to Danny more and I know Kevin is. Never shy about voicing his thoughts. Um. In the, for the betterment of the town, uh. Especially guiding people as uh, town meetings approach and things of that nature, so.
Alright.
I'll sit here and, in the unlikely case you. So he runs out the door, okay, like he needs to run out the door?
Thanks, Kevin. And uh, yeah, so just, uh, Tim, please open up some questions uh. From, from the planning board or from the select board?
Sure, yeah, I mean, um, I mean, if you don't mind, I'll go first, if that makes sense?
Absolutely.
And uh, this is uh, the uh, the proverbial softball, Danny, but uh, what makes you interested in joining the planning board?
So I have a big interest in the future of the town. Uh, I'd, I'd like to raise a family here. Uh. You know, I, I, I'm somebody who um, invests in the future, you know, with my, my work. I run a small business and I um, I coached at Mansfield High School. Uh, I coached uh, three seasons of running there. Uh, I know it's town over, but still, I, I have a commitment to the future. Um, you know, in a lot of what I do, and uh, that would include uh, a job that's important, which would uh, you know, I understand the implications of. Real estate, um, and you know, in various um, you know, zoning laws and, you know, all the moving parts that are involved with the planning board. Um, when it comes to small businesses, big businesses, um, you know, residents of the town, future residents of the town, right?
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you cut off for a second.
No, I was just gonna say thank you. Um, I don't want to hog the, the microphone here, especially with two boards here. Um, I'm not sure if others uh, have questions they'd like to ask, so I will cede the floor.
Anyone else?
Well, my only question that you already answered was uh, did you intend to, to run for the office afterwards, so?
Yeah, my original intention was to run in April. Uh, it just popped up. I figured it'd be a good opportunity to uh, to, to learn a lot, especially over the next four months and then to run again when April rolls around.
Good.
Excellent.
I guess I'll go ahead again. I know um, Danny, Kevin mentioned talking about meetings. You mentioned you coach uh, at Mansfield. Generally, our meetings are on Tuesday evenings and they've been scheduled at seven fifteen. Do you feel that represents any conflict other than a lack of sleep potentially on that day?
There, there would be no conflict there. Uh, if, if ever there were a conflict, it would be maybe once or twice a year at the very most, but as of right now, I don't foresee any conflict at all.
Okay, you know, we've had past members who say they have a standing thing on the second Tuesday, so we schedule, make sure we're scheduling first and thirds or. Generally, we're scheduling far enough out that we can avoid things and uh. We generally try to avoid uh, meeting on February, April vacations for obvious reasons, et cetera, so.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, could I just ask um, through you, why planning board specifically?
I, I'm sorry, you cut out on us, yeah.
Sorry, my question was why the interest in planning board specifically, please?
I, I just understand the impact it can have on the town. Um, you know, I, I see, I follow the meetings. I, I see a lot of the. Decisions that are made. I, I see a lot of the signs around town and I just know the importance um, that it has for both residents and businesses alike.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions? Tim, do you have any other questions?
I do not. Um, I am not sure where the motion, where any kind of motion action should originate from in the joint session. Uh, I admit to being rusty on that point of the procedure.
Uh, yeah, I think we'll, I think we'd like to start with the planning board. So you, you could go ahead and do your uh, do your nomination and motion and then we'll do the same for the, for the select board after you've done.
And Danny or Daniel?
Uh, Danny.
Okay.
So, you're up, Tim, for the planning board is up.
Okay.
Sorry, make the motion to appoint Danny Horgan to the planning board until the, is it April eighth election?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Alan Boulay and a second from Mr. Wayne Graff. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll go through the planning board members for the roll. Um, and I'll start with.
Oh, see, this is why I want.
You've muted.
You're muted.
Yep, no, I'm here. I was just checking. Um. So I will start with uh, Alan.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Um, and then uh, we'll take a motion from the uh, select board.
I would like to make a motion to appoint uh, Danny Horgan to the planning board until the uh, general election in April, the town election in April.
A second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second, um, any more discussion? Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote. Um. Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. So if she passes.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'm uh, looking forward to this a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Jim. Hey, Jim, you still there? Get off this call before your wife kills you because you're on vacation, alright?
Well, they could be out tubing at night. It's a little too cold for me for that, so.
Enjoy your time.
Okay.
Okay. And we. I was gonna say, just Danny, I think uh, the town planner or Brian Carmichael, who also works on the department, will be in touch in terms of the next meeting and making sure you get a town email and all that stuff.
They're right over here.
There he is. Alright, thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
And for the planning board members, we do still have another item for our joint agenda, so don't sign off right away.
Yeah, almost.
Yeah, so the, um, so as Tim, Tim just mentioned, we have a um. Uh, discussion on the amended settlement agreement with Carol Advertising. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to, to Mike Units to give us an explanation of what we have here.
So from the time that you uh, first uh, approved the settlement agreement, Carol Advertising. American Outdoor came back and they amended the agreement, um, same amount of money as far as payments, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, for the next sign, four hundred and fifty thousand if they get a third sign. Um, but they're spreading the payments out over ten years instead of a lump sum, so. Twenty-five thousand a year for ten years for the two fifty, and then for the other sign, it would be forty thousand a year with fifty thousand for the last, the last payment. Other than that, everything stays the same as far as the agreement.
Through the Chair, was there a reason they wanted to spread it out over ten years?
I, just a financial uh. Use nothing. I, I don't have a problem with that. It's. You know, keep it as a uh, a funding stream for ten years rather than being gone after a while.
Mr. Chair, so let me just, so the first, the two hundred and fifty is ten years. Uh, the additional sign is also a ten year uh, payment of the four fifty, or is that a, once they move that, that's a? Oh.
The four fifty is also forty thousand a year, one fifty thousand K the last thing.
Correct.
I guess it's got a good cash flow issue.
Right, right.
Did you, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, um, Mike, did, was there any, do you mean? I know the pushback is kind of like he asked and we don't really have a reasonable pushback. Was there any way to kind of get that? Sealed up within five years or anything, or is it just kind of, you just didn't see it as a kind of a necessary pushback?
Um, I, I didn't see it as any pushback. Our current advice, you know.
Yep.
Take, take what you're getting and uh, so.
Um, I did, um, through you, Mr. Chair, I did speak with the town manager and the town accountant regarding the funds and the placement of those funds uh, when received. One of the things that I know that the town accountant advised us is um, if we are receiving it, that we may ask it as a donation. Um, because then we can, um, as a select board, we can, before we receive the funds, um, we can um, designate that into a separate account. Uh, for what we see, that it can't just go into the account for no reason, but it would be a donation that would be for that. And uh, one of the things that we may ask, um, Mr. Carol is a letter of that donation. This, so I, I think there's a lot of discussions that have to go on between the board and the town manager and the accountant um, regarding the funds and where, where and what they'll be used for.
Just um, if you do approve the agreement tonight, if both boards could authorize their chairperson to sign off on the agreement. And you know, I know if you want to volunteer, uh, someone to say that money.
Okay, so, um, I would like to make a motion to have uh, Kevin Snyder, um, acting pro temp. Uh, Chair, to sign the agreement with Carol for, I'm sorry, it's American Outdoor Advertising. Sorry, I'll adjust. Carol Advertising, um, while the Chair is, is absent. That's a motion.
Um, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, sorry, there was a delay there.
I'm trying to process that motion. Yeah, alright, so we have a motion and a second, um, to, to appoint me to sign the settlement. Agreement.
Uh, just, just um, discussion real quick.
Yeah.
Like, does that limit us? Does, do we, do we have to determine what those funds are tonight? Okay, we can add it, okay.
And that was my hesitation on that.
Again, yeah.
Alright, so we'll take a vote on Michael's motion. Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Uh, and I do have an I on that, so. And then, um, does the uh, does the, the planning board have any questions or concerns about uh, about this uh, amendment to the uh, to the, so?
I do not. I'll uh, hold to see if any of the other members, either joining virtually or in person, have any additional questions. Otherwise, according, as the select board, we would look for a motion.
I'd motion authorize the Chair of the Planning Board to sign the amended settlement agreement with Carol Advertising.
Seconded.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion and Laura for the second. So any further discussion on that motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through the members again for a vote, again, beginning with the virtual attendees. So Alan, I will start with you.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And that concludes our vote.
Okay.
Um, Mike, is there a specific date you need that signed by?
No, anytime you can get in, thank you.
Okay. Um, I believe that concludes the items that were on uh, both the planning board and the joint session agenda. Um. If there's any, nothing further that we have for the joint session with the select board, I would look for additional action from the planning board.
Motion to adjourn the planning board meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Laura, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn the planning board? Okay, hearing none, I will go through everybody in the same order once again. Alan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So, planning board members, we are now adjourned. Uh, but obviously, as members of the town, we can attend the rest of the select board meetings, should we so choose. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks to all the members of the planning board that people are supporting us. So we're gonna do the, um, we are gonna do the, the public hearing, but before we do that, um, we uh, we do have one more appointment. Um, we'll take care of that, so, so Brian doesn't have to hang out here. Uh, so um, uh, Brian Spangler, um, uh, is uh. Is here tonight. Um, he is uh, waiting for an appointment to the zoning board appeals. Um, so just to start us off, just introduce yourself. Tell us why you're interested, Chair of the B A, and we'll go from there.
Sure, uh, good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Brian Spangler. Um, I've been a town resident since two thousand fourteen, a property owner. Um, I've been involved with the town's emergency management group uh, for the past few years and uh, more recently, serving on the Board of Survey. Um, professionally, I've been a licensed architect uh, since two thousand sixteen in Massachusetts. Um, and that kind of ties into my interest in, in this board, um, because a lot of what I do is actually sitting on the other side of the table. Um, as a designer, presenting to, you know, planning boards in general. Um, for the past seven years, I've actually been. Uh, working on public projects in the Commonwealth, mostly public schools, so have a lot of familiarity with, um, you know. Public funding, um, the current project I'm working on is a two hundred and seventy million dollar uh, school in Belmont. Um, prior to that, it was in Bill Ricka. That project was um, over a hundred and forty million dollars. Um, and uh. I, I, I currently also serve as our technical director for the company I work for, Perkins and Will, which is a firm, uh, it's actually an international firm, but. We have a hundred and seventy people located in Boston, um, so. My role is uh, basically to oversee our project delivery process. Um, so that's, that's roughly thirty million dollars in revenue. Um, so, sorry, I'm dropping numbers, but um. Feel like that, I feel like that might give.
It sounds like a small mom and pop shop.
I give uh, some context to the types of projects I'm, I'm working on. Um, and uh. Yeah, just have an overall interest in being more involved. Um, like I said, I've been in the town for, uh, since two thousand fourteen and, and um. I don't have any particular agenda in terms of, you know, zoning. Um, just looking to be involved and, and, and help fill, fill a void. Um, and I, I felt like my professional background, um, and personal interest in being involved, uh, complemented the, the opening well.
Right, Mr. Chair, do we um, just invite to the table uh, uh, Planner De La, De La Fuentes? Just so she can maybe give us some insight on the planning, the Z B A. Did you have any feedback or anything from that, on the guy in this appointment?
I don't think so. Brian might be able to speak about a little better.
Okay.
Uh, there was only one response, but Tom, well, the Chair, you can hear it.
Okay.
Welcome, in addition to this here.
Okay. Wonderful.
And we have on this open position on the Z B A. But I believe it's an alternate position. We have ultimately one full chair.
So this would be filling the full seat, Mr. Chairman?
It was not where it runs. It was your first.
Well, we fill full, we fill seats before we fill alternates, right? So, no, um.
Do you guys have any other questions?
I don't.
I mean, I'd like to hear some more qualifications.
Yeah. But, but get into numbers.
Like I said, you work for a small mom and pop, it sounds like, uh, oh, no, I'm playing, no, I think it's the. And, you know, as I always like to sing the praises of the Chair of the Z B A, he's actually the oldest serving. Chairperson, I believe, no, no, that's longest. I meant, I meant to say longest. I was about to say, no, it's my, the longest serving uh, person and. Uh, anybody who works with him uh, sings his praises, so, um, I think uh, you're, you're going to be joining a great, great board.
And my two cents is that, I, I like the fact that you, you said you're coming in with an agenda. Um, that to me is, is key for any position. Very happy with that.
Yeah, I've been great to have someone from the other side of the table that you sent to. So, do you want to entertain a motion?
Uh, absolutely. Um, I'd like to appoint, um. The, like, make a motion to appoint Brian Spangler to the zoning board of appeals, open seat.
Second. Uh, we have a motion on second. Any discussion?
Yes, we, so when is this seat? Does we, do we determine when this seat, uh, Z B A is on? It's appointed, so it'll be every, it'll be the.
Yeah, out in the newsletter.
You'll find out that, 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 that was it.
Alright. Right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And I am a hi. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Appreciate you stepping up.
So, we are, so this is full procedure. I gotta follow your, for this.
Yeah, you gotta, yes, you gotta up the Harry's there.
Alright, so.
Welcome.
Do I close the open meeting? Alright, so, um, I'd like to open the, uh, scheduled seven fifteen, it's not seven thirty, uh, public hearing on the app, application for a transfer of the common visual, or visual or license to expose keep for sale and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises at one seventy five Mansfield Avenue, Suite Four, Wood Mask, from Zeng's International Incorporated, DBA Greatwoods Mandarin, Manager Ben Zheng, to Norton Jade LLC, D, DBA Norton Jade, Manager Jin Lu, Sam Adams. And welcome.
Thank you, good evening, so I'm Anne Marie Johnny, and this is Jin Lu, and this is her husband, well, Plan. So, like you said, it's, um, very simple, straightforward, one seventy five Mansfield Ave, Suite Four, um, the Greatwoods Marketplace, they're gonna be taking over for the Greatwoods Mandarin Restaurant, um, same footprint, nothing's changing, same hours of operation. Um, they do have an assignment of the current lease, which is gonna run through twenty thirty seven, um, which I believe begins, the assignment begins February first, which, again, take longer for things to go through, but February first it's starting. Um, so Jin Lu is the sole member and manager of Norton Jade LLC, single member LLC, so that's the applicant. Um, she's been running restaurants here in Massachusetts since from approximately two thousand seven. Um, and then, uh, her husband will be working there as well with her. Um, and I believe you have everything in the file, um, workers comp, um, citizenship, resume, um, all the certs from Zeng's, um, the ABCC transfer application, um, again, the assignment, the lease, the financial records, um, again, there's no loan, there's no pledge of license, nothing like that. Um, it's just a straight asset purchase agreement, and again, assignment of the lease.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I'm not, Mr. Chair, um, just to tell manager, this is the common vic, we already voted on the, like, the transfer of the liquor license, correct? Uh, to meetings, uh, meeting ago, um.
We've heard of the transfer of the renewal.
No, it's just the transfer.
Not new previously.
This is, this is the alcohol.
This is the alcohol, okay, so, it was, okay. We voted on, what did we, did we vote on the transfer already of the?
Probably voted on the renewal of the existing license.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I don't think we voted on any transfer.
Okay, I apologize.
So we, so, so one of the previous meetings, we voted on the renewal of Zeng's license.
Okay, okay, so this.
Perfect, cool. Um, any other questions?
Uh, expand on the restaurant experience, just for my own curiosity.
Yes, we do restaurant running for the, on the two thousand seven.
Okay.
So, we have a lot of experience for the, for restaurants, and we took the customers very good, and, um, other, we don't have a experience for, for liquor license.
Okay.
So, right now, we want, because we have four kids, so I want to make better than for them. So I buy the, I still have a one restaurant in, uh, Hassan.
Okay.
I want the sales, the move here, you know, running better restaurants, for the kids, better, because they're still young.
Correct.
Uh, four kids, the kids just the ten years old, uh, the fourteen and the thirteen.
Oh, so almost old enough to, uh, put them to work.
Like, uh, like in restaurants.
Right, the other ones were more, I mean, they had some seating, but it was really more. Right, and there was no liquor licenses previously at, at the other restaurants, so, again, this is, they're really kind of moving up a little, taking a step up to a better location, a better, you know, better restaurant, really.
And I didn't see it, you know, I'm assuming the ABCs require the tip certification or of someone.
Correct, correct, so she's getting hers, um, alcohol pan does have one, again, there is no liquor license at their existing restaurant, his is expired, but again, because it's gonna be in her name, she is getting one, so, and I can provide the tip certificate.
Great. So we have to close, you have to close the public hearing, and then we, then have an open discussion, and then we.
So I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second, close the public hearing.
Uh, actually, we have, because it's a public hearing, do we, we, we are off and vote, do we have to, discussion come from there first?
Yeah, if there's anybody.
Okay. Sorry.
Thanks, um, so, yeah, so we have a motion and a second, um, hearing, no discussion, to close the public hearing, so.
Hi.
Alright, I'm an eye, um, and then, um, any further discussion?
I don't, I'm excited to, that the business is staying open, I'm excited to have new business people coming to town, absolutely, um, and, uh, you know, we've, uh, we have a Norton Business Association in town, and we're always looking for new members, just branding getting started, always looking for new members, so.
Yeah, 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 I think it's great to have someone's, so much experience.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and stepping up to a, upgrading the business, yeah, I like that.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, who I should, oh, I should have, uh, I should have, you know, I should have, I should have passed, to ask for it, I know. Yeah, exactly, I, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of transfer of common vic license, um, to expose, keep for sale, and sell all kinds of alcohol beverages to be drunk on the premises at one seventy five Mansfield Avenue, Suite Four, Norton Mass, O two seven six six, from Zeng's International Inc., doing business at Greatwoods Mandarin, Manager Feng Zhang, Jin, to Norton Jade LLC, doing business as Norton Jade, Manager Jin Lu, um, that's.
And I will second all of that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Um, take a, uh, we'll call vote, Mike?
Hi.
Hi.
And I too, I'm an eye. Congratulations. Good luck.
And so we'll go forward to the, the, the survey for the tips.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so we'll, uh, we'll go back to appointments, resignations, and retirements. So, um, unfortunately, um, we, you've noticed that Frank Durant, um, has to design as director of Parks and Recreation, um, Frank, uh, has a, uh, new opportunity with his, his quote-unquote day job, um, so, um, so sorry to lose Frank.
Yes.
Um, we do have, I think, posted now for, uh, for the part-time Parks and Rec director position.
Um, and if you are interested, you can send your resume to the town manager, and, um, and to say, how many hours a week, wait, maybe you can give a little description of the job.
So, um, I just wanna say, first of all, that Frank's done a great job, you don't see a, a lot of what Frank has done, but he's, uh, has done a great job, and I really appreciate, uh, what he has accomplished. So, um, the position is, right now, it's budgeted for, uh, twenty-five hours a week. Um, although, it's more hours in the summer, when the pool's open. It's all the supervisory responsibilities at that time, than it is a winter, it's a little, like, less busy. Uh, but generally, it's twenty-five hours a week, um, I don't remember the salary off the top of my head. Uh, but, anyone's interested, it's posted on our website, and, uh, posted on the MMA website, and, uh, we look forward to receiving a lot of resumes.
And if Frank's able to stay on a little bit, to hopefully, couldn't get somebody in and have him trained before he leaves. Okay, that would be ideal.
And to, to, to kind of, uh, echo my, the town manager's comments, I know that Frank came in and took a lot, spent a lot of time organizing the department, it, it just had kind of gone, what happened is, we had several people transition out of the position, and just, just by the lack of it, it seems to be, frankly, I know, worked with a lot of departments, helped organize a, a lot of things, from renewing leases of, uh, of different fails and, and uses and so forth, so, it is going to be, uh, sad that we're gonna lose. And good luck to him.
Yes, a lot of programs he's got lined up to roll over.
Yeah, he, yes, he did, I mean, just the few he did were, were spectacular.
Yeah.
Very, very big shoes to put.
We do have to work on the town manager not accepting resignations, he just seems to always accept them, he doesn't realize, and he can say no, we do.
And we say no? Okay, so, uh, moving on to, um, uh, another resignation, um, unfortunately, Paula Riney, um, from the, uh, council on aging, also sent a note in, um, saying that, um, she could not continue on, uh, on the council, so.
Uh, that's a loss, another loss, was she's, she's, I, it's so funny, is, uh, I didn't actually know she served on the council, because I know where she serves on the boosters, she serves on so many committees. So, yeah, that's a big loss for the town, and, uh, you know, thank you, Paula, for all the years of service.
Absolutely. Alright. Hey, moving on, um, we have some minutes to approve. Uh, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Great.
They, um, like to make a motion to approve the minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Uh, second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and December fourteenth, point twenty-two, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, take a roll call vote, Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I, I too, I'm an eye. Alright, Mr. Clark?
Renewal some license, dude, yes, yes, we're almost down there, uh, before, because this is it, so, uh, before we even start, uh, I would like to, uh, thank, uh, Jennifer Reed, who is the select board administrator, she's done, uh, this used to be a real Herculean task, uh, and it still is, um, but she makes it look easy, she kind of tackles it, gets all of these in, um, and it's now, I mean, the twenty-eighth, we were chasing some things, people a long time ago into January, so now, that doesn't happen, so I just wanted to thank Jennifer Reed, if she is on air, thank you, Jennifer, uh, before I read, read these protocols.
You're reading my motion, right?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the following, uh, renewal licenses. It will be common vic license, uh, to serve food at tables for New England Rodeo, one eighty-five, uh, North Washington Sea, uh, no, North Washington Street, common vic and a live entertainment, Swamp Donkeys LLC, one thirteen Mansfield Avenue, just a common vic. I'm gonna stop for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, do we just get some roll call votes, because we don't have anybody online, I'm sorry, um, okay, so, uh, all those in favor?
Alright.
All this opposed. And motion passes.
Okay, and the, like to approve the, um, exit leasing LLC, two fifty-three Mansfield Avenue for a class two used car driver's license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles, uh, and New England Autos Inc., three fifty Old Colony Road, for also a class two used car dealer license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles.
Oh, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed. And motion passes. And, I think that's it? Well done. Coming after my job. Alright, so, uh, moving on to.
It's safe, by the way.
Um, the next on the agenda is announcements, I don't have any other announcements, other than, I don't know if we wanna just mention that we can have this part-time position available, um, so we do have a part-time, um, employment opportunity for a part-time assistant animal control officer, um, and, um, that requires a, uh, high school diploma with a work knowledge of animals, especially dogs, uh, associate's degree in science or animal science, preferred ability to communicate well with the public under a variety of conditions. Um, and this is a part-time position with a starting salary of twenty dollars per hour, so same as before, reach out to the town manager?
Yes.
Um, if anybody has any interest. Person, I was in that position, um, it worked out great, she was a qualifier, but, but she just got appointed. Full-time, I, 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 her, not here, so. Sure, I didn't get her.
Sure I didn't get her?
Sorry. Our animal, our assistant animal control officer, who was a qualifier, person, uh, Scott, appointed to full-time, so, no good.
So, so, let me make a question for the town manager, for Mr. Chair, Mike, how does the assistant animal control, their, their schedule is so, you know what I'm saying, it isn't a nine-to-five job, how does an assistant part-time, how do we determine those hours, I guess?
One of the things, we, we have an animal shelter with animals, so, it requires someone to be on, on weekends, so generally, that's what the position is, going in for Brian's vacation, and.
At least, they're not necessarily making the animal calls out into the field, that's still.
They, they will.
They don't?
Yeah. Uh, on weekends, if there's a call. They take the head home and they're on call.
So, this is for someone that's looking maybe for some more additional, is it a vet tech or something like that, this is probably a great, great position for that.
Cool. Um, I don't have any other announcements, it's kind of amazing, usually we have a bunch.
Yeah, it's, well, it's their story, first of the year, first of the year, and coming, uh, fast and furious.
Alright. Okay, um, we can move on.
Yeah.
Um, so, the next item on the agenda was the review and approve of Lucky Green Lady's HCA Amendment One. Um, I think, Mike, you're still waiting on some things there, so. Yeah, we'll put that up to a future meeting.
Okay, yeah, that's.
I think that makes sense. Um, uh, next on the list is, uh, so this is mine, I put this on here. Um, so, couple of questions have come up recently, um, about, uh, policies and procedures on the select board. Um, uh, it came up once with regards to, um, reworks, and when we should be doing them, or not doing them. Um, and then it came up against recently, but again, recently with, um, this question about select board members access the council. Um, so I did just kind of some poking around, uh, with other towns, and, and, you know, found some, some pretty, you know, explicit, um, rules and policies for selectors, which I thought would probably be helpful, um, for us to have. Um, so, just talking to Mike, um, earlier tonight, um, apparently, we do have some, uh, some policies and procedures somewhere in this building?
We do. By the way, they, they, it's a little bit outdated, it's a blue binder, uh, and in, in the select board's office, and, uh, I'm sorry, the papers are very, very old, but yes.
So, what I was gonna, so, so after talking to Mike, what I was, was gonna suggest is, maybe if we can take a look, you know, maybe we could just come in and take a look at what we have. Yeah, and then at a future meeting, maybe we can just talk about grabbing a couple that we think might be, you know, the most important, I don't think we'd have to write, you know, twenty-five new policies or procedures, but at least take a look at what we have, and see if we can amend anything or change anything, or maybe we just leave it the same, but I think it would be good for us to have some clarity around, you know, just speaking for myself, you know, this is the first time I've been on the select board, so, you know, if I, if, if I make missteps, or if I do things I'm not supposed to do, it would be helpful to add something, um, to refer to and say, you know, okay, you know, this is something that, one, that we have, and we can refer to, but two, has been reviewed somewhat recently, um, and, and been updated, so. So I'm just gonna suggest that we, you know, um, we, we come in, take a look at what we have, uh, we can all kind of reconvene on this in a future meeting. And, uh, and like I said, maybe we just take like one or two things, and just start there, start easy, and we can, you know, kind of update this, like, or manual, get it online, which I think would also be, get it on the website, which also something that would be great, um, but, um.
It means Mike will have to scan it. And check some paper.
Yeah, so, um, so, with that, Mr. Mr. Yes, this is, do not print it, okay, whatever you do, do not print it, um, Mr. Chair, it's, to that being said, I. Yes, this is do not print it, okay? Whatever you do, do not print it. Um, Mr. Chair, it's to that being said, I actually um and I just say we kind of went by the wayside. Um it'd be, at after the election, I was planning to present a policy manual to them. And so I'll bring that in there because there are things, I think some of the things that I think are missing also are they're not, they're not rules, but it's expectations, right? Uh there's certain things, certain events where it's not written anywhere that the select board be there. But when the select board isn't there, people are like, where's the select board, right? And I think that this, this is is things that are policies and then they're just kind of and we can't make, we know that we can't make every event. We we know, we know that, but I think that this is kind of a, so what I will do is I will uh bring that up for the future discussion because it was a manual that I saw it missing. And I know when um a former select member, Devol came on, she was looking for more guidance, like a and 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 actually the chairperson as well said, I wish we had a manual, just an understanding. And I kind of geeked it out and sat in front of a computer and uh and and typed some of these things up, so.
Well, you know, I can add to that. I mean, there's a couple of things I didn't even realize that we were part of would be the X funds and uh Summerick. Those things came up and they said, you don't go to the Summerick meeting. And I had no idea what that was at that time. So things like that should be included. Things that aren't like, aren't necessarily part of the day-to-day job, but you should know about, you know, when you come on the select board.
Right, and that's, that's one of the things that we did is, you know, there's a definite, there's a very probably longer agents definition, so yeah, not that.
Right.
Yeah, does does anyone know what they, you know, does everyone know a uh the, you know, the bike trail is, you know, is managed by the you know, that group or and this group that manages that. It's, you know, people think that you just drop in this, this is different than any other boards in town. It it like it, don't like it. There's a lot of remarks.
I think the expectation too is that, you know, when you get on the select board, you have kind of gone through other boards and you but that's not always going to be the case. You're gonna get, it's an elected position. So, you know, we don't have um any kind of guidance. I don't like it. I don't like the idea of having, you know, strict rules or anything like that. But like you're saying, just guidance. What's expected? And even for candidates who are running before they run to have some idea of what's expected of you when you when you do get elected. Um you know, I think that would, that would be a really, you know, good thing for us to have.
I think one of the things that I think is important that I think we've learned over the last two meetings is just the transparency of first of all, I think it's very important that uh the town manager control or has control of town council. And I know this is in that, in that blue manual. Uh I haven't actually seen the page just for the record, but I've been told it's in the manual. Right, right? So so it's one of those things, because I do think there are other boards that are reaching up to town council without us, the select board knowing it. And and or the town manager knowing it, and that's a big no-no, right? That's a, that's an expense that town, town meeting controls. And and I I think it's we, is is actually a correlation from one board that was just calling that's for the increase last year in legal expenses. And it's it's tied to that board and that individual going, not going through the town manager. So
Yeah, and you know, I've seen, like all things, there's different ways that different towns handle it.
Yeah.
Um and and yeah, I think I think that's exactly the kind of thing that if we could take a look at what we have and then say, okay, well, this is thirty years old. Right? So this doesn't really make sense in today's, today's world for accessing council. And then we can talk about it. We can sort of
It does.
figure out what what makes sense now and and
We're all not gonna get our own councilor, right? Our own board or the board, right? We can all say that. So it's kind of, there has to be some trans uh openness of, hey, I asked them this, this was their response, right? So
Yeah, I mean, I I you know, I I get what you're saying. So if I if I can interpret, and I think this stems from uh and this is not to put you on the spot, Tim, but when you reach out
Oh, please do. No, no.
Over the hot seat, Dave. By the way, throw, cheer pro town.
No, I want to make it clear, like I I I don't, I don't blame you for any of that. I think I think you had a question, you reached out, and you did what you thought um you you should do. And that's perfectly fine, I think. But I think a- as the town council is the council for the select board, that's something that we all should have known about beforehand. And I and again, I I want to stress, I do not blame you for for that at all. I think um that should have come to all of us before the meeting. So so things like that, to avoid things like that. Um I think having a readiness is
I accept the, I accept the feedback.
Um, no, it's it's not, it's not, honestly.
No, no, no.
I I know I I sound sarcastic a lot, but no, this is not sarcastic. I I promise.
I'm fluent in sarcasm. I appreciate that. I know. Um, no, I appreciate that. And um yeah, I mean, I I accept the feedback. And, you know, all I want to do is just make sure that anybody else who comes into these seats is in a better position to
Absolutely.
to to handle things that like that that come up. Um and um I don't think it's any secret that we probably have some things that need to be updated. Um and that just seemed like maybe one of them that needs to be, so.
It's like someone coming out of, just to put a shameless plug in here, there is an election on February eleventh at the Norton Middle School. Did you know, did you from uh from from nine to three, just to gain to put the the shame, so that person would be, would benefit from this. They'll ever with the winner of that.
And I listen, I'm not, I'm not ashamed to admit that, like, you know, some of the things like you said, and I think that's, you're exactly right, like the X fund.
Yeah, we
Um, so you know, I think, I think there, there are certainly things that are sort of global, right, that we could talk about. And then there's certain things that are specific to Norton that are gonna have to be, um, you know, they're gonna have to be laid out somewhere. So and I don't want it to be this, one of these huge projects that never gets done because of trying to shed light off more of the two. Just do, we could just do a little bit here and there, and then we can build some.
I'm gonna bring that in, have us all review it, and then say, okay, kind of mark it up and say, we need to make this smaller, we need to add this, because I think that would be helpful. Because it it is, you want to make something that's doesn't have so much detail that you're not gonna read it.
Right, right.
Right, I mean, I mean, if you want to fall asleep, if you want to fall asleep, read the Town Charter. It's it's a very good, it's a very good document. I've uh I've made it through the end several times, but it's a very, you want to go to sleep, read Town Charter, and that's I don't want it ever churned into that, because I want to be able to put reference to it.
And I I don't think it needs to be anything that's a bylaw or anything like that. It just needs to be sort of a policy and procedure to reference.
Yeah.
Right, right. I appreciate that, gentlemen. So um, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll move back forward and we'll keep that discussion going. Um, next up is um a discussion in our vote to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Norton and Easton and the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Norton and Foxborough for emergency motor vehicle technician services. I love the nice Chris Simmons.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, um so I'm basically just asking the board to authorize the town manager to sign and enter into those uh two intermunicipal agreements, one with Foxborough and one with Easton. Their uh respectively, each of their fire departments have uh maintenance services uh for hire available. Um, they have a bay that can do probably ninety percent of the repairs right at, right at their facilities. Um at a significantly cheaper price than what we're actually paying now. So currently, we pay probably about a hundred and seventy to two hundred dollars an hour for labor. Um I agree with our apparatus and uh, but it means for lesions now, which is in Foxborough. Um, if we, if we enter into the screen, it allows us to utilize their services to repair our apparatus, which is a really big expense for us. Um and our average price will be now between ninety-five and ninety-nine dollars now.
Wow.
So not only that, it gives us additional options. Um what are the problems we run into sometimes with apparatus repairs? Is the the shop that we're using is really busy and our truck will sit there for several weeks uh before it even gets taken care of sometimes too. So I hope that help, this will also help with the turnaround time for our apparatus. I know if I call somebody I want those places, I'll get a, get somebody to ask the phone, some, some good information for us. So.
I'm excited. This is in front of us, but Mr. Chair, three, okay? So this is to you, you and the town manager. Doesn't this fall under the day-to-day operations of the town or no? Is this be, why is it in front of us?
The document um went through town council and uh the municipal agreements originally came from the respective towns. We had town council review them. I mean, just a couple of changes and um I believe town council advised that uh that the board should authorize the town manager to enter into that agreement.
Choice in this agreement, I apologize, I did not review this.
It's probably pretty standard as far as those things.
And is for what period of time?
Uh, three years.
Three years? And so Mansfield and, I'm sorry, Foxborough and Eastern.
Correct. Yeah. So by entering into one with each town, it allows us the option basically try out each town, see which one works better. Or if one town's busy, we could send the apparatus to to another town.
And they both the same, the same cost roughly, or?
Yeah, um I want to see Foxborough is like ninety-nine dollars an hour and Easton's ninety-five dollars an hour. Yeah.
Captain, I I'm assuming.
Kevin Fuller, he's our, he's our department mechanic. So he does, you know, all the repairs that we can do in house, house, does a great job. Honestly, he comes out all hours of the night, look at the trucks and get them back to the station when they break. Uh but we don't have the facilities or the equipment here to do any major repairs. Uh both Foxborough and Easton have a full high bay with lifts that can lift up uh, you know, fire trucks and stuff like that. So
Yeah, if there's a select one, maybe somebody that's working, it needs to be done on a vehicle. I'll be on the uh zone stand.
So the scope is just for the mechanical? This is uh this the scope of this, this, these contracts are just for the vehicles? The ambulances, the engines?
Primarily the ambulances in the, in the engines, yeah, in the ladder trucks.
The ladder truck?
Yep. Uh they're all, they can also do maintenance, current maintenance, uh pump testing and that sort of thing as well. So that opens up a lot of different options to us.
And and how, how do you cancel this? How, how often do we have to do those inspections? How often do those things have to be certified with pumps?
Yearly.
And all yearly, they have to be certified?
Several certifications that we have yearly for pumps, for fire, for example, pumps, ladders, anything, a lot of stuff that we have P A required yearly, just for liability purposes, so we have to do it yearly. Uh the good part about these agreements is we discuss what we choose, what's just, it gives us options to set stuff where we can't fix it in-house. Um, there's a lot involved, the family doing in-house, a lot of costing, costing down for us to set up ourselves to do that. Most games we know where this town is, we don't have any family. So I wouldn't worry, but this just gives us a lot more options to play with. Because we're pretty limited right now, as we come on our emergency equipment, because of the certifications required for that. Just to kind of give you some, some respect with our back, we started started the year with twenty-two thousand dollars and that ride ended up to eleven thousand eight hundred. Is there exactly about halfway through the year? So uh past years, I've had to ask um finance, money, emergency fund transfers. That for some years, that's, that's plenty of money, but the trend lately is just going to be that transmission break, turbos, you know, big big ticket things to to automatic control. Our trucks get big front of maintenance from Jeff and Phil. Uh, but and right, they get older, right? A lot of construction has, you know. Yeah, uh you know, I want twenty-three.
Yeah.
I understand some issues there.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chair, one follow-up question. And I like to put this, this isn't necessarily indicative of this contract, but I like to ask it all the time when we start talking about town's equipment. The life of that ladder is at what, how, what, when, what is that life of that ladder that we're gonna have to come up with some plan, either to community, regionalize it, or to
Yeah, yeah. Generally speaking, it's about twenty-five years. Captain Fuller can maybe speak to it a little bit better than myself. Yeah, depending on usage, like anything, but our ladder is basically expected twenty-five years. Josh is coming up due within the next three years or so, so we're
So we're at twenty-two year, that ladder is twenty-two years old.
We've been looking at that, and our engines are about twenty, twenty-five. On life span. Yeah. And the landowner is about six to seven years.
And have we started any regional, and this is off, but facing this, but we can bring it later. Have we started any regional conversations regarding regionalization of a ladder with Mansfield or Easton or Foxborough?
Not specifically.
Okay.
To that, yeah. We have mutual aid agreements with them. We have automatic aid agreements for the highway. Other things, certainly, we need their, we need a ladder truck when we call them, we'll go bring it.
They'll bring it, but it's, yeah.
But as far as having them come automatically for every call we have.
I I would
I would assume they wouldn't want us to do the same thing. We had another specialized piece of that apparatus.
Right.
To reciprocate, you know?
And if I'm not mistaken, the refurb that only gets five years' life and it's and it's half the expense of a new ladder, so it's really
Ten years or so, um in the, but you know, probably about five hundred thousand dollars now, depending on what they find, what's wrong with it. Uh, new ladder truck is probably in the one point two, one point three million range right about now.
I like to ask that question. I want to put it on as many people's radar as possible. This is coming due.
And the other thing to consider is, is when we're talking about this type of apparatus, they take a couple of years.
Right.
You know, you can't, you can't go to the, you know, the street, you want to, you know, go buy one or something. Uh, we ordered an ambulance about a year and a half ago. It hasn't even started to be built yet. Just in the backlog, yeah. So um so when we think about the age, you know, it's good to act on it a couple it'll be a little bit proactive, maybe at least a year ahead of time or year and a half ahead of time.
And that price is locked? When we ordered it, that price is locked?
For for
The ambulance?
It is now, yes. Yeah, originally, they wouldn't, they wouldn't want the price because they couldn't even find a chassis. So now I believe they've almost secured that.
Because they're going down to the old junkyard and find an old chassis and we can build out an ambulance on it, I guess.
Go to Capital Firms, there'll be a request on the, I'll set right, original cost of the way. Now the ambulance is going to run up twice a day.
And some bookkeeping for you to do, I saw this on news today, why this was a news item. Wish to buy a new fire truck. I don't know why it is, buying a new pumper or whatever they bought was a news item, but the chief said that uh they asked him about how old the other one was, said how old the others. And you know, how many runs it had done. He said it came out to a four dollars and sixty cents per run.
That's a pretty good, that's a great, you know, it's
Fire apparatus, which is really, really, really difficult to get. It has to, it has to go per per run and meet the the criteria. So, yeah, you know, and and you know, we don't have the personnel to take it on all the calls that that we need to. So right now, our ladder truck primarily will will roll out when we get a call for a reported fire. You know, um, we we normally don't have the staff in to to have a roll out on every, every allow.
There seems to be, and some managers can recommend from all, this seems to be, especially on fire and 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 police. Uh, we can regionalize, there seems to be a desire to regionalize, but I could be off-base on that. If it, if it makes sense, am I? Is it? No, I'm I'm off-base.
Well. It would be a good thing, but I think they'll hit lots of roadblocks.
Okay.
Anything. Um, I'm quite sure how to answer that. What you said, yeah. Uh, I mean, certainly, there'll, there'll be, you know, maybe a lot of cost savings in doing that. It would be five-year, ten-year process to to do that. And, you know, you'd have to do a lot of negotiating and you know.
We're right, we get ourselves in trouble. We're three years away from addressing the issue. Let's start asking the question, see if there's anyone that might even be able to do it.
Yeah. I always say that when you think about um towns like where I live, in over Culver, Avon, Abbey.
Those are building over two stories.
Lock, when you put them all together, they're not even half the size of Plymouth. But everyone has their own police station. You you could have a regional police station, you still have as many, the same amount of officers out on the street. But then you'd have better detectives and all this. But so the longest time, I don't even know if we were cast detectives. We never had detectives. Judges smiled. Everyone insists on having their own.
We still need the same amount of people, the big savings, ready with those capital items, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I know, and and just to be very clear, I don't talk about, I don't ever imagine the regionalization of of firefighters. In that, I'm talking about a truck that is there are very few probably, you you, I'm not a firefighter, so I don't know the, that the ladder is needed, absolutely needed, right? Barrowsville probably fire was, we had to get above it and just drop a lot of water down on it. That was one of those situations where it's it's really necessary where maybe regionalization of a piece of equipment like that might make sense.
It it's not just the the aerial ladder as well, everybody kind of sees, but there's a lot of ground ladders stored in there, in there as well that allow us to access you know, on different sides of the house from the, from the ground. There's a lot of other specialized equipment that's uh stored on that piece of apparatus as well. And the height of the ladder, everybody thinks, why do you need a ladder that that hits that high? Because we don't have high rises in town per se, but it's the hypotonic of the triangle, if you will, but you have to be able to reach, you know, you can't just always pull up from the house, you know?
I I was told there will be no bath tonight.
So do we, do we need to approve the agreements or do we need to approve town manager to
I think, I was just reading, so I think we need to approve the agreement.
Two, two different agreements, so kind of making one motion.
Be two agreement and on products.
Okay. All right.
Okay, um I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry, you want to do it?
Yeah, go for it. Tell you.
Yes, the chairman, I had, I think they said that these have to be right, right, for what?
And you can take it, right? You know, Steve, uh Steve, uh, left, left, call the left here. Uh I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh intermunicipal agreement between the uh Norton and Easton for a three-year term uh for the what's the intermunicipal green, what's the title?
For emergency.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize here. For, I'm sorry, let me just start again. I'd like to make a motion to uh to approve the intermunicipal agreement between Norton and Easton uh and Norton and Foxborough for the emergency motor vehicle technician services for a three-year term.
Since we're on like
And to allow the town manager to sign both agreements.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Much appreciated. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you. No problem. On a, on a good note, too, we just um just received sixty-five hundred dollars for uh Safe Grant through the, through the state, so that's uh student Through the through the state, so that's uh student education, fire safety as well as uh elderly. Education, fire safety as well, so we just get that, and we also just got a twenty five thousand dollar federal grant. Um to hire a consultant to develop a hazardous mitigation plan for us as well. So once we have the hazardous mitigation plan in place, that opens up a lot of federal grant money, like some some large amounts of money for infrastructure. You know, replace the cover and doing something on most of the lines to to prevent flooding or something along along that, so.
That's great.
So we're a little ways away from from having a plan developer work. On the way, I can put it, yeah, yeah, so fantastic.
Okay.
Awesome job.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you.
Alright, and then uh so we're gonna move ahead to uh my number, item number six. Um uh the budget timeline and preliminary financial information, I'll turn it over to Mike for that.
Um so I I started with uh first of all, the uh budget timeline, so in uh. I didn't see that, so uh with our departments, we made their uh capital plans. That will be uh putting that together. Uh and also um January twenty fourth, I'll be meeting with all department heads on the general government side to. Begin the process of preparing their budgets um for FY twenty four. Uh. February ninth, all the uh budget requests from to do back from the department heads. Um and then in February, uh we'll begin our capital improvement meetings. Um. Five-year plan, uh we'll go to the cap, the select board, the Fin Con. Um on February twenty second. Um also on March first, I'll issue an updated estimated revenue and expenditures to the. Um select board, the Fin Con, the school committee. And then the final school budget is due on March thirteenth. Uh then once again on March fifteenth, I'll give another update on estimated revenues and expenditures to the select board, the Fin Con, the school committee. Um on March twenty seventh, the capital recommendations from the town manager are due. Uh and the town manager's budget recommendations to the Fin Con and the select board would be on March twenty seventh. And then uh again on March twenty ninth, updated estimated revenue and expenditures to the select board, Fin Con, the school committee. And then uh on about March twenty ninth, all budget books will go to the finance committee. And um. Then by April seventeen, the capital committee will submit their recommendations to Fin Con. And public hearing notice, budget public hearing notice um will be posted on cable. And April twelfth, uh updated revenue and expenditures again to the select board, Fin Con and school committee. And the finance committee's public budget hearing will be on April nineteenth. And twenty six would be the last update on estimated revenues and expenditures to the select board, Fin Con, the school committee. And that town meeting is May fifteenth.
So. Alright, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Mike, at this point, have you? Can you give him preliminary guidance of where you wanna see the budgets for all towns?
Sure, um I'll show you, let me go to that. So one of the things um I provided you with. Is. Some of the estimated uh revenues. Uh so we start, you know, looking at uh first step would be to look at estimated revenues and that. Where we think those will fall. And uh so based on uh. Objective increases or decreases, so the pro two and a half allowed increase will be one million nine five thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars. New growth, the assessor has estimated at six hundred and fifty thousand. State aid, we just put a number in there, ninety thousand, you won't know anything now. Especially where I'm a governor, it could take a little while for the first cherry sheet estimates to come out. Uh local receipts, uh right now, we plugged in three hundred and nineteen thousand increase. Uh ambulance fund. Uh. Looking at another hundred thousand out of the ambulance fund. Uh the Hicks fund is a reduction, uh from what I hear, going from two hundred thousand to a hundred thousand. So the total estimated revenue increases that we have right now are two million one hundred fifty four thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars. And then speaking of superintendent, and then my equal of my staff. We try to set like, we try and set a three percent target.
Yep.
And then uh so a three percent increase for the town side, general government, we've got four hundred thirty thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars. And for the school budget, it would be one million fifty one thousand thirty four dollars. Our total of one million four hundred eighty one thousand eight hundred fifty two dollars. So we would be in pretty good shape. Except uh then we look down below train concerns. Uh I've addressed the concern, um as you remember, we got a grant to fund four firefighters. And we, that grant will run out uh in March of twenty twenty four, so for the senior that year will have to plug into the position, so that'd be. A hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. And then I'll estimate the future in twenty twenty five, an additional two hundred and fifty thousand. So our ambulance receipts are coming in, um that we're able to take another hundred thousand out of ambulance to cover that. Uh increase in FY twenty four. And then I'm already, I've already took an account for one hundred thousand dollar reduction, expand. And then the low, the, we have a one million dollar payment, one million fifty dollars or something like that on the train project this year. Uh so that's still um unknown, uh I really would like to. See if we could have a meeting with Fin Con, the school committee. And yourselves, and trained, to get an update on the scheduling. Buddy, we're gonna see coming back and help offset that payment.
Us, last year's correctly, last year, we didn't expect to spend three hundred thousand dollars on that, we expected some of the rebates. To kind of cover that, but those rebates and that savings never hit the town budget. So the town end up outweighing an additional three hundred thousand to pay that town, take that, right?
Right.
Okay, and now this year's a million dollars?
Really gonna sit down with Trey and say, when are we gonna see some money from the soul of animals, and give us, so we can budget for that?
Are are there additional grants for the uh fire staffing? That we can look into, I'm sure. I'm sure the chief's doing everything he can.
Right, well, because it was like a four-year grant, so once you get that. Um part of the commitment is to keep those people on.
Or a period of time, I think, three, it was like three years, it was like three years covered them, and it was actually, the original grant was half, half the fee. But then they covered the full amount, and then it was three years after that, and I know the chief is just itching to come in.
I saw there, that's why I asked, because I'm there.
We were just talking about the uh the the grants on the.
That expire in twenty four.
Correct, yeah.
March, March. Yeah, are there, well, my question was, are there additional grants we can try to? It's a, it's a, it's a three-year grant, um we actually lucked out when when we did it, it's normally it was uh. They would cover seventy percent for the first two years and like thirty percent for the third year. And in the town or city, we normally have to make up the difference. So we actually, when they, when we got it, they had plus, they were actually covered a hundred percent. Well, with COVID and everything like that going on, so we kind of got the that grant at the at the right time. Uh it's only three years, the the it's staffed to adequate fire rescue services is is grant. Uh but it's only three years, they won't allow you to put in, to extend that, the purpose of the grant is, you know, if you're projecting, say, hire the four people. You know, down the road and you wanna work towards that, this allows you to act upon that immediately while you plan for it, you know, three or four years away.
Yeah, so, and this, this allowed eleven, if I'm not mistaken, eleven. Um firefighters to be staffed, and that was your goal, was eleven firefighters to be staffed.
To have eleven, that, this would give us ten though.
Ten, okay.
Yeah, I know, I reviewed. Yeah, but um which allows us to drop down, which will almost consistently drop down to eight. Because eight is really where we, we absolutely need to be, to keep um child fire station open, right, yeah, so.
And I know that you guys, um Charlie rescued a woman um on West Hodges, East Hodges, something last week. Where if that station wasn't open, you guys would have been fifteen minutes, twenty minutes away.
You guys several calls since that station's been open, where uh it's really made quite a, quite a big difference having them get here so quickly. Uh we had like three fire calls and and some pretty significant medical calls, where they've gotten really quickly, it really has made a big difference. Excuse me?
It's saying Chinese, thanks.
That's right.
Uh Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um and Mike, and this is, can you make sure that we get the, you know? The schools being in debt with state mandates, unfunded state mandates, I know fires being hit with uh with with unfunded mandates. Uh police are getting hit with, can we, we make sure we have an understanding on the specifically? I know the school, Joe will handle his portion, but I wanna make sure we get an understanding of all the mandates. I think uh I think uh speaking to the chief, I think there were some like three hundred continuing education hours this year.
But.
For the police, just for the police, which was, I was blown away by, uh and those were just kind of mandated requirements on education.
So like uh the school resource officer, seventy two hours, fire rounds, taser instructors, took ninety six hours. New sergeant training, eight hours, so uh I'll get this over to you.
Right.
Two hundred forty hours of training not allocated for in this year's budget. So I'll send this over to the chief.
That's great, I know, but I know with uh Chief Simmons, Alex, well, there's a whole list of mandates and so forth, because it's really. I mean, it, I think we all say, I think every select board in the south, three hundred and fifty two towns say. Why are they passing mandates when they're not passing funding for the mandates, but it's 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 not just on the education side that, you know, that these mandates happen.
So I I was talking with Kane that day, and I asked him, you know, can you just send me, but which your sales have been so far? Just so I can have an idea, and he sent me this whole Excel spreadsheet. And based on a rough estimate on his and uh a three percent, it could be a two, it could be like a hundred thousand dollars. Sales tax, so that's something that'll help us, once we get that nailed down, that could help us.
August, August, September, October, November.
Yeah.
Alright, December.
That's on sales.
That's that's right, so that's, uh this is just one of those, we really thought we're projecting. Originally on E D C of almost eight hundred thousand, that's, that's when we bought marijuana, but you can see the flatting out of of the business model as a whole.
So for that quarter, it's like twenty seven thousand five hundred and thirty.
Hey, every little bit counts.
Very cool. So um he just stopped it in his office, so whatever.
So I have two other things, last year, uh you know, shame on me, I took my eye off the ball. I didn't, could not find the the school public hearing date or anything. Can we make sure, or is it just, should be an email from us to to the the school committee saying, can we get an official invite to that public, that hearing?
I'll make sure.
Okay, because I I I didn't, I took my eye off on and hear that. The other is, I think, Mr. Chairman, through you, I think it's critical. That we get an understanding on this train thing, because this is, has legal looked over the contract. And uh to see if there's.
I'm sure they did, Kenny.
But I am curious about the performance clauses that have been met at this point, you would think there's something that the town could do to. You know, I I understand there's supply chain issues, there's other circumstances that, you know, lawyers love to put clauses in there that protect them, but.
Yeah, I would think it'd be good if we have a meeting with them and see what they say about when things are gonna happen, and then compare that to what it says.
So what this year, when it's supposed to happen, yeah.
Because this was, we're supposed to be entering, this is a very in the second year. We were supposed to pay something this year, but it wasn't the million dollars, next year was when we were supposed to feel the brunt of it. And by that point, we would have savings at the school level and the town level, and we haven't even, we haven't felt any savings on this. So I'm very concerned, I as I am very, very, very concerned about this contract.
And um so with the numbers that I did, I'll keep updating you as we get more and more on the cherry sheets as we get further along with our revenue. This year to see how that's trending. And we'll update our local receipts and help people block on that.
Yeah, we all agree.
Yeah, when all, like, not to panic, when all the budgets come in, we'll provide you with. What that number is, right? So you see that?
I'm assuming last year, our transportation went down slightly. Our education was kind of, did it go down or was it flat, uh funding, state funding for education? I think for the most, it was flat, wasn't it?
I think chapter seventy, they added money.
Oh, did they?
With the last cherry sheet.
For transportation, definitely, the ninety, the ninety bucks been down.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike, this is, this is very helpful.
Yeah, thank you, and all the information, you know, I gave you, and some of the charts, that's all on the, on our website, it's a great site, so I wanna go on. And I get an idea on five minutes.
And we have um just contracts and rules this year, we'll have change, uh the town town account. We'll add the police, fire, everyone, right, police, fire. And he's like, good times. Mike's, Mike does an amazing job negotiating.
Alright, um discussion on important upcoming dates.
Just give you those.
Is that, is that one?
Yes, yes.
Well, that was also. I was just wondering what that was.
What is your birthday, you want to tell me about your birthday?
So, okay, uh any other business um? In the last two days that came up, that couldn't get on the agenda, I don't have anything. Um uh any old business for discussion?
There's a lot of old business, but we're not gonna.
Uh town manager report. Okay, you just did it pretty much, um and uh select board report and mail. Um. Steve.
Alright, so speaking of important dates, um I'm gonna have some office hours on January twelfth, from five to seven. It's Thursday, uh January twelfth, and it might be my last office hours for a couple of months, because. Yeah. We believe the baby's due on the uh twentieth, so. Around the twentieth, so we'll see how that goes.
It's gonna happen on January.
I actually, I I put it in my calendar, January fourteenth, I put that in there six months ago, so I think it's gonna be the fourteen. Um so I have um an update on the permanent building committee, uh unless there's other, you wanna do some?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh so we met on the, I believe it was the. I think the fourteenth. Um and there was some discussion on uh the contractors for the uh senior center, it's now public community center. Um and out of the five competitive bids, two of them were under budget. Um the first one was about a million dollars under budget, and I and I'm not gonna do it justice as Jim would, but. Um per comes a million dollars under budget, when these bids came out, um that company actually contacted. Um contacted us and said that they had to review their bid, um so we're gonna see how that goes, we're meeting on the third, two.
Just some draft?
Absolutely.
They pulled their uh.
Oh, since then?
They know that, they're going, they said they're going forward.
They're going all with that?
Yep.
Okay, so that that bit is. It's smart, wow, I think it's a smart move, yeah, um I I think, you know, I think they saw how. How low they were compared to everybody else and and kind of panic, but uh they reviewed their numbers and came back and they can do it, that's fantastic. Um but yeah, but right now, that, as of now, that's a million dollars under budget uh for everything, so I think that's, that's fantastic. Um and we're meeting on, uh like I think I said, the third, to, I believe, select that, that's it, uh hoping. Um. The other issue that came up during that was, and this is just um some kind of. Uh. Some A B stuff, uh for the select board room, I I don't have the video for you, but for the select board room, there's uh, there's a big table for everybody. Uh that'd take eleven seats, so it could fit up to everybody in Fin Con, and behind us would be a projector, so the projector for everybody in the audience to see. There was another projector to. There was another projector to the left. Um, they're gonna eliminate that, and there's talk of either putting screens in on the table in front of us. Um, every third person or so, or some configuration of that, but that's, that's ongoing discussions, um. Other than that, there was, there was nothing major to the stuff, um. But I think it was fantastic that the senior center came under budget. Um, so there was one other thing, the siding. On the town hall, is gonna be, I believe it's called. Uh, oral true exterior. Um. It's a. It's a material that it feels like wood, it's it's pretty tough, it can be painted to what we're gonna do. Um, and it, there's only, it's proprietary, there's only one company that makes it, but the cost is gonna be the same as what we had previously, um. So that's gonna be the change there, but I would not, that's.
Do we need the hall slattery in front of us to tell them not to take away our chairs? Not to take away our table, I mean, just tell me.
It's not.
Yeah, this is, I mean, there was quite a discussion about it with the, the screens coming up, because the way the table is, it's, right now, it's level with the audience. So, if you have screens up here, you know, it's gonna be hard to see, so.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're engineering it so that they're either angled down, or maybe they come up, or something, they're gonna try to find something else.
We talked about it, I figured, I was just like, thanks. Where they have laptops that plug in. Where they eat, eat their head cord, and what, like, directly to the screen, it's a power cord. That's all, I thought that's all.
I I mean, I I ran the, I I talked about the tablets here, we're all, I mean, we all have tablets here, I mean, I, the board should have them, or at least. Like you said, you know, be able to plug in.
Yeah, like in Mansfield, so, what's about this high, yeah, right, I think this is. Runs along the table, this plug.
Okay, those are the big, the big problems, really. From the top.
Hi, thanks, Steve.
Uh, Chair, uh, real quickly, um. Nope, um, unfortunately, I could not make last meeting, but they're still trying to, they pushed back some of the uh settlement things. The state basically had the settlement, but it had no way to actually. Give the money to the town, so they're just trying to figure out that, some of the programs are gonna be pushed back on that. Um, more importantly, I did touch base with Gatra as an appointment, and they seem very shocked to hear from someone from the. They were, yeah, they think it's been a while, uh. The January, January eighteen, it's a third, third Wednesday, and it floats between here and the town hall, the city hall.
Is that meaning in the library, since they were trying to get the library?
I think it was, uh, I think it's a town hall, I'll have to look at that, but, that's uh, but. Some of the things, if you have any get, um, transportation concerns regarding Yatra, I know one of the things that's on the agenda. That Mike has been working on with uh State Representative Barrows, um, is service from um, the center of town to the bus. And, you know, seeing if we have a community parking lot, see if it makes sense or doesn't make sense, and that's. Who goes to the airport, so, so that, and then um. I'm also was reached out by a lovely lady I met during the veterans uh parade, uh, Trista Mencino, Mecini. Guys, and uh, working with stealth, uh, threat, uh, the veterans agent to. She's trying to build awareness on veteran suicide programs, and so just trying to work with stealth and uh. To make sure that there's any services that we can provide to our veterans. That we're basically using all the resources that they can offer.
So, the one thing I wanted to add, um, I'm sure everybody's noticed, the gazebo came down. We had, we had quite a few, um. Uh, businesses down and and volunteers helped take it down, I I don't know everybody's name off the top of my head. Um, that was Archer Electric came out there quickly.
Archer Electric came up to take care of the, the electric rain roofing, uh, I know was, was kind of jumped in there. Um, I know, um, Mr. Rich, uh, and his crew, uh, came on and basically, he kind of spearheaded a lot of the uh, a lot of this. Uh, we had a lot of, you know, I, as I told the town manager, I'm a little upset, when a tree hits my house, I can't get a copper to call me that. When the town gazebo gets us, we had, we had, I'm only teasing, but these individuals did an amazing job, um, you know. And uh, trying to recall, um, Mr. Rich's business, and I apologize, so, I could just say, Mr. Rich was your business name. Advanced, yes, uh, advanced, I'm sorry, advanced waste, they were able to kind of make the area safe and really just kind of keep the. More importantly, I know everyone that reached out, uh, was really wanting to keep the. Holiday vibe of the lights on in the center, and uh, everyone pitched in and did a great job. Um, so, yeah, they still, you're up on that.
You totally stole my.
That's pretty much what I'm hoping for, so I apologize.
No, yeah, and and, you know, very much appreciate it, and my, my question was, I I know some people reached out to rebuild it, do we have anybody that's? Committed to it yet, or is it?
Not yet.
Especially because it's the logo for the Norton Business Association.
Sorry, but I haven't heard from them yet.
Okay.
We, we, we expect regular gazebo updates.
Okay.
Alright, so. We need to put that on it, like, as an. That was great, but this folks came out and called to be in safe. Pretty crazy storm, so. Alright, um, alright, you guys got anything else? Um, Lawrence, um, I think we're gonna just get that and let Meg take care of that. The chair, yeah, the chair, the chair handle that. Um, and um, next meeting is uh Thursday, January twelfth.
Same bad time.
Same, yeah, we'll do it here, seven o'clock.
You wanna do it the media center?
January twelfth. I think, let's do it here, and then, we can talk about the media center, maybe. Okay, as long as you don't wanna, you know, say no again.
I just go, I just go along.
So, alright, we'll uh, we'll talk about that, so, um, no executive session tonight? Alright?
Motion to adjourn.
At second.
Alright, and we have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor? All those opposed?